Is six sixteen P M. I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Sarah, could you do roll call, please?
President Buker.
Here.
Trustee Barhite.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Polley.
Remotely.
Uh, trustee Hopkins.
Here.
Trustee Gant.
Here.
And trustee Faber is excused.
Great. Did we meet open meeting compliance?
Uh, agendas were posted both online and on the village website last Friday, July eighteenth.
Okay. Trustees, do I have approval of the agenda sequence?
Madam President, I would ask that we move um section twelve up above uh nine treasurer's office.
Does anyone have an objection to that? Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to move section twelve planning and zoning to just before section nine treasurer's office.
So we have um Hopkins and Brooks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we will go into number six, public comments.
None.
We have none. Number seven, president's comments. Um first, I would like to apologize for being late. Um our administrator has a family emergency, so we needed to work through some things with her to let her go home. Uh, so I apologize for the late start. Um, seven point one, reschedule September village board meeting to Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five, due to the Labor Day holiday.
So moved.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Right? Seven point two, E D C meetings have changed the first Tuesday of the month, starting August fifth at four P M. Except that the September E D C meeting will take place on Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five, at four P M, due to the Labor Day holiday. So I would like to make a motion to move the E D C meeting uh for September to September eighth at four P M.
Second.
Okay, Uker and Brooks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Great. Trustee comments, eight point one, public safety liaison update.
Uh, we have a um meeting coming up uh a week from today, uh the twenty seventh. Um, to talk about the S R O program here in uh the village. Uh, the attendees will be um the administrators and board presidents or who were invited. Were the administrators and board presidents from River View, Salem and Trever, Wilma, as well as Kenosha County Sheriff's Department. Uh, as well as the board president, Miss Buker, and administrator, Miss Hiller.
Eight point two, southeastern Wisconsin Fox River Commission update.
We have a meeting scheduled for Friday, one o'clock in Big Bend.
Eight point three, Lake Districts, Silver Lake Management District.
Uh, just a little short report here. Their next meeting is September sixteenth. Uh, I'm sure that's going to be at Copper Bottom. Uh, they're preparing the W D N R grant for twenty thousand dollars for still a pack quality water study. Uh, as I've stated before, the Kenosha County Sheriff's out there two days a week on on the weekends on Silver Lake. And they're observing more water, more mill foil in the lake this year. All survey will determine the extent of that. That's it.
Okay, perfect. All right. Um, Volts and Camp and Center Lake Management District for trustee Faber, he uh gave a printout here tonight, so. Uh, he says both Volts Lake and Camp Center are having their third quarter meeting this Thursday, six P M here at Village Hall. Both district boards will be discussing their twenty twenty five invasive plant eradication efforts and determining if any other chemical treatment is necessary. C C L R D will also be discussing their twenty twenty six budget in preparation for their annual meetings, August thirtieth. Also, both camp and centers' water level is down about a foot from last year due to a lack of rain. And both lakes had early blooms of vegetation and later than normal panfish spawning due to on again, off again, warm weather in June. Um, eight point four, E D C update, trustee Polley.
Hello? Uh, okay, so E D C um as far as what we're looking forward to at some point here, being able to get the information we received from the public in April. We had the reach out meeting there at Village Hall uh put together and available. Um then the uh next item would be the uh working on creating an E D C splash page. Uh, and then there's a third item, and actually, I'd like to um request that Brian Filiatro step up to the podium and speak about something that uh popped up that uh seems like it's going to be something uh pretty great. Uh, so if he could do that, that'd be that'd be great.
Sure. Just state your name and address for the record, Brian.
Brian Filatro, twenty five, seven hundred Silver Lake Road. Um, the last couple of months, I've been looking into um what some things that we could do in the village because uh we have a lot of road issues and uh uh, I think the E D C's core mission is to strengthen our local economy by encouraging existing businesses to stay and new ventures to establish roots in the village. One of the major barriers of growth is our roads. The road costs since COVID have just got astronomical. And um, we need to figure out another way that we might be able to solve that problem. And um, that's why I've been in discussion. I've talked to Polley, I've talked to Dennis Faber, I've talked to Rita a little bit about this. To explore a strategic new goal of transforming how we build and maintain roads through more of a regional collaboration. Um, kind of what the vision would be is to create a shared service consortium. Um, that would have a specialized dedicated group of people that would focus just in the road construction. We could, you know, utilize po- public works employees when needed, if need be. Um, the county does this. Um, but the heart of the initiative is about efficiency and maximizing the productivity of every dollar through shared costs and smart planning. So um, for context, the current county, um, the cost per mile is about three hundred K. Substantially less than our one million per mile. Uh, we currently, while we might not hit the county's benchmark overnight. But I think that we should take take a close look at how we can create a consortium of maybe three or four villages and work together. The init- the initiative is still in its early stages, but I've consulted with leaders at the state, county, and local levels. And the momentum is promising. Some type of collaboration among neighboring villages could be um could open the door to much lower costs for road construction. There's lots of hurdles that need to be accomplished. But so far, it looks pretty good that we can achieve something. So three of the grants that we could possibly look at is the Innovation Grant, which I think you guys are aware of, that we were looking at with the EMS. I believe that was one of the grants. Um, that the L R I P grant, which is a local road improvement grant. And then also the A R I P, which is more of an infrastructure related to agricultural roads, which we do have some of those. The Innovation Grant could be substantial money. Could be, um, the whole idea of the Innovation Grant is through shared services, working with other communities together. And um, because the the state understands that our levy is not enough money to cover the costs that we that we need in order to keep up with our roads. So they're offering these grants and trying to force villages to work together to maybe find cheaper ways of doing things. So I think this is something that obviously we would need the board's support to to look at. Maybe the E D C could spearhead this, and we could at least start a conversation. And who knows, maybe we can find a path to saving the village a lot of money.
Thank you. Eight point five, library board update.
Last month, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but I was getting ready to go over to the library meeting, so we bumped them. Uh, it was just mainly bills, but the the records or the minutes you can read was from the following month before that. We approved new software and a appointed officers. But it was just Bill paying for the last month.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, we'll go on to number twelve, planning and zoning, discussion and possible action on the following. Twelve point one, ordinance twenty twenty five point zero seven nine six, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the village of Salem Lakes land use maps. Maps twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five. The village of Salem Lakes ninety eight fourteen Antioch Road, Salem, Wisconsin, five three one six eight dash zero four four three, owner and applicant has requested the land use designation on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty two one four zero two two zero. Located in the southeast, one quarter of section twenty one, township one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes. Be amended from P R one Park and Recreational and C one Primary Environmental Corridor to R four Suburban Single Family Residential and C one Primary Environmental Corridor. For informational purposes only, this is, this parcel is located on the east side of two hundred and sixty ninth Avenue, approximately six hundred fifty feet north of the intersection with County Highway S A.
Uh, next four agenda items are the two parcels at the village board. Approved selling and putting back on the tax rolls. In order to close on them, we have to rezone them, and in order to rezone them, we have to do the land use map amendment. So the first agenda item is the land use map amendment for seventy dash four one twenty two fourteen zero two two zero. We'll do the land use map amendment first, followed by the rezoning, if so desired. And then the next two are a map amendment and a rezoning for seventy dash four dash one two zero dash two one three oh five seven five. Recommendation is for approval.
Any questions or discussion on this from the board?
I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Brooks and Hopkins. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Twelve point two, ordinance twenty twenty five point zero seven nine seven, ordinance adopting an amendment to the village of Salem Lake zoning map. The village of Salem Lakes ninety eight fourteen Antioch Road, Salem, Wisconsin, five through one six eight zero dash zero four four three, owner and applicant has requested the zoning designations on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty two one four dash zero two two zero, located in the southeast, one quarter of section twenty one, township one one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes. Be amended from P R one Park Recreational District to R four Urban Single Family Residential District and C one Lowland Resource Conservancy District. For informational purposes only, this parcel is located on the east side of two hundred and sixty ninth Avenue, approximately six hundred fifty feet north of intersection with County Highway S A.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Hopkins and Gant, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point three, ordinance twenty twenty five point zero seven nine four, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the village of Salem Lakes land use maps, maps twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five. The village of Salem Lakes ninety eight fourteen Antioch Road, Salem, Wisconsin, five three one six eight dash zero four four three. Owner and applicant has requested the land use designation on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty two one three zero five seven five. Located in the southwest, one quarter of section twenty one. Township one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes be amended from P R one Park and Recreational and C one Primary Environmental Corridor to R four Suburban Single Family Residential and C one Primer Primary Environmental Corridor. For informational purposes only, this parcel is located on two hundred and seventy eighth Avenue, approximately two hundred and eighty feet south of one hundred and third street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So Hopkins and Brooks. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, twelve point four, ordinance twenty twenty five point zero seven dash nine five, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the village of Salem Lake zoning map. The village of Salem Lakes ninety eight fourteen Antioch Road, Salem, Wisconsin, five three one six eight dash zero four four three. Owner and applicant has requested the zoning designation on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty two one three zero five seven five. Located in the southwest, one quarter of section twenty one, township one north, range twenty east. Village of Salem Lakes be amended from P R one Park Recreational District to R four Urban Single Family Residential District and C one Lowland Resource Conservancy District. For informational purposes only, this parcel is located on two hundred and seventy eighth Avenue, approximately two hundred and eighty feet south of one hundred and third street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hopkins and Barhite, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, twelve point six. An ordinance to amend the adopted zoning map for the village of Salem Lakes from A one agric- Aha, mis- misnumbered. Well, it says twelve point six, so that's what we're going to go with. Um, that's really twelve point five. An ordinance to amend the adopted zoning map for the village of Salem Lakes from A one Agricultural Preservation District, C two Upland Resource Conservancy District and C one Lowland Research Conservancy District to A one Agricultural Preservation District, C two Upland Resource Conservancy District, R one Rural Residential District, and C one Lowland Resource Conservancy District on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty three three one zero three hundred. Located in the north one half of section thirty three, township one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes. Larry Holst, one two five two one Bristol Road, Bristol, Wisconsin, five three one oh four. Owner and applicant, for informational purposes only, this parcel is located on the north side of one hundred and twenty second street, approximately one half mile west of Rock Lake Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you like me to comment?
Yeah.
Yes, so thank you, Andy, uh village planner. So this item uh came to the plan commission. It actually is a fairly simple land division, and then the following item is a certified survey map to create a five point three acre parcel. The land use plan already shows for this rezone to occur, so it was something that was thought out into the future. And uh, we did not see any issues with it, and the plan commission did not either, and they approved seven zero.
All right. Is there any questions or comments from the board? All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point seven, a resolution approving a certified survey map stamped received June fourth, twenty twenty five by planning and development to create one five point three acre parcel from tax parcel seven zero four one twenty three three one zero three hundred, located in part of the north half of section thirty three, township one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes. Larry Noel Holst, one two five two one Bristol Road, Bristol, Wisconsin, five three one zero four. Owner and applicant, for informational purposes only, this parcel is located on the north side of one hundred and twenty second street, approximately one half mile west of Rock Lake Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So Gant and Brooks.
Yes, and so related to this, we would recommend approval. Uh, as you can see in the resolution, there is two conditions. One is we're waiting for comments back from the department administration, and they always do the review of the certified survey map for technical details before it can be recorded. Once we get that reveal, we'll provide it to this uh surveyor, and then the map will be corrected, and at that point, it can be signed and then recorded. But everything looks good from a zoning standpoint, and the plan commission, again, approved unanimously.
Okay. All right, is there anything else from the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Twelve point eight, a request from Armana Brothers LLC, one two four one seven Antioch Road, Trever, Wisconsin, five three one seven nine, owner Arthur J. Jonas Junior, one two four one seven Antioch Road, Trever, Wisconsin, five three one seven nine, agent. Requesting a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant with outdoor dining, recreation, and entertainment in the B three highway business district on tax parcel seven zero four three five four zero eight four one. Located in the southeast, one quarter of section thirty five, township one north, range twenty east, village of Salem Lakes. For informational purposes only, this parcel is located on the east side of State Highway eighty three between one hundred and twenty fourth street and one hundred and twenty fourth place, the fire pit. Go ahead.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Hopkins and Gant, go ahead, Andy.
So this item is a request for a condition use permit for outdoor dining. This property already has a deck outside that was constructed by the previous owner and was just existing. The new owner came in to get a permit, and from that, we were able to determine that a conditional use permit was never granted for outdoor dining. And so he's going through this process to to do that. Uh, the intent of the applicant is to rebuild the deck and to put an outdoor bar, and uh, so he, that's why he needs this conditional use permit for that outdoor dining. Uh, the property has been reviewed in regards to parking, and the parking, uh, they meet that requirement with the extra seating that would be occurring outside. And this was presented by the plan commission, subject to all the conditions you see before you, and it was recommended to be approved unanimously.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Andy. We will go on to number nine, treasurer's office, discussion and possible action on the following items, nine point one. Approval of vouchers in the amount of nine hundred and eighty three thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollars and seventy eight cents for June twenty twenty five.
Let it switch. Uh, the last minute, you had asked for better descriptions. I pulled a different field on that description column. It's always a little better to know exactly what we're paying. If not, if you still have a question, I can send you a copy of invoice and give you some more detail on that.
Yes. I appreciate that. Is there anything else? Any questions from the board on those?
We'll make a motion to uh approve the vouchers in the amount of nine million, eight hundred, nine million, eight hundred and eighty five, nine hundred.
No.
I'll get it.
Just that high.
Nine million. Nine hundred.
It's not nine million.
Nine million is way too high.
Nine hundred eighty three thousand, one hundred and seventy nine. Nine hundred eighty three thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars and seventy eight cents.
Okay. I will second that. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Nine point two expenditure report through June thirtieth twenty twenty five.
Uh, so through June, we have spent the thirty four point seven percent of our budget. Uh compared to the last year was thirty six point nine percent, so just on our last year. Uh and well under the fifty percent uh for halfway through the year.
Alright. Does anyone?
Motion to approve the expenditure report through June thirtieth twenty twenty five.
I don't think we have to approve that, it's just a. FYI, alright. Thank you. We will go on to nine point three discussion regarding borrowing for capital improvement projects. Go ahead, yes.
Thank you, uh so Todd Taves from Mellers, we had a workshop a few weeks ago on capital borrowing. And Cassandra asked me to follow up with a couple additional scenarios, so you've got a document and I do have hard copies if anyone. Would care for that, uh all the pages behind the cover are just the supporting information, so I summarized. Everything on one page and. Uh what I tried to do here is to also give you a sense of what does this really mean in terms of dollars and cents on an average home, so. For purposes of that analysis, uh we're using four hundred and fifty thousand as an average property value. And kind of going from left to right, the four scenarios. So at the committee of the whole meeting, we looked at scenarios where. You would fund with debt capital uh borrowing of two million dollars per year for the year twenty twenty six. We'd ramp that up by five hundred thousand dollars per year until we reach three million and then we'd go up by three percent per year. So the first two sets of numbers are those same scenarios we looked at a couple of weeks ago. So if you look down the year column, that will show you in the CIP funding level. How much uh would be allocated for roads and other capital in each year? And then the average home impact, that would be the dollars and cents that that average property uh taxpayer would pay. In that year above and beyond uh the taxes for operations and existing debt. So the first scenario uh as compared to the second scenario, the distinction is in the first one. We would be borrowing the money and doing some structuring of that debt over the first few years to achieve that more. Level impact on the tax levy and the tax rate. Uh in the second scenario, uh this is where we're just borrowing the money and repaying it in its entirety. The next year, so this gets you again as close as you can to cash financing, the only difference is you're going to pay. Uh up to one year's interest on that money. So the first two scenarios, uh that finance is about one uh to one and a half miles of roads per year. Uh and really no other uh capital. So the additional scenarios I've ran, which I'm calling C and D. Uh these would fund uh two miles of roads and then four miles of roads respectively. Uh plus some additional capital, think of scenario D as effectively, that's full funding of the capital plan that you were presented. Um, so as you you look across, you can see there's a pretty significant difference in the impact. In the first scenario, the impact would be about two hundred and fifty six dollars per year. If you were to go all the way to a six million dollar funding level in one year, uh that impact would be a bit over twelve hundred dollars per year. So we're hoping that this is uh helpful in engaging. Uh where your comfort level, if you are comfortable with borrowing for capital where that comfort level might fall. I think Cassandra, if she was here, would uh just remind the board that in order to. Proceed with preparing the budget for next year, uh that some direction and guidance will be needed. Uh sooner rather than later, uh in terms of uh whether or not you would support some financing. Uh as I had mentioned at the uh Cow, it's you know roughly a two month process. From the time you would say go ahead until the time we can uh get that debt issued and close and from a timing perspective, the most essential thing is. That you uh issue the debt prior to setting the levy. Because what that allows the village to do then is to exempt that payment. Uh from the levy limit and the levy limit is again why you can't just fin- finance this all with cash. Uh through a cash levy as the village has done uh in the past, so I'll stop there and I'm happy to. Answer any questions that you might have.
If I remember correctly, that timing was. Before September, is that correct?
I think in a perfect world, we would know by the end of August, uh so that we could bring a resolution to you in September. Uh issue the debt in October, I my understanding is you typically adopt the levy in early November, so if we got the transaction completed by the end of October. Then you'd have the actual numbers for setting the levy.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh tonight, this is discussion only, no action, just so everyone has the information and they can um. Think about this and uh we will. Talk about this at our next meeting, but does anyone have any questions?
I do, actually, so as I was looking at this, are is it typical to go in two? Two million dollar increments, or can you do split it, split the difference at any point? Like three million and five million instead of.
You you could do whatever you wanted, so so the idea here. So when I ran the two million dollars, the first two scenarios you saw previously, I kind of just. Made that up based on some discussion I had had with Cassandra, uh. So I think your upper bracket is the six million and again that would be funding everything. In the CIP fully, but if you, you know, for example, thought three million was the right number, you can certainly uh do that, these are just. Uh illustrative scenarios.
And um another question then, as I'm looking at um. The the borrowing borrowed amount increases every year. And does it always have to be the same amount, or we can also reduce that based on. EDC does come up with something, we can borrow less money, right, so this is just a scenario.
Correct, you would make that annual decision as part of your um. I would say as part of your budgeting process, but if you're, if you're going to rely on this technique. Uh where you're essentially trying to pay back most of it in the following year to save interest expense. You you gotta really kind of lead the budget process with that again, so we can get the debt in place prior to setting the levy, but. Yeah, absolutely, it's a annual decision making process, you're not committing uh to. To a particular program year after year.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, anything else from anyone? Alright, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, nine point four, request for proposals for twenty twenty six audit services.
Uh so Clifton Larson Allen has been our auditor since I believe two thousand nineteen. Uh and again, no issues with them, they've been great to work with. Um but every every few years, you just want to, I think, put an RFP out there, make sure there's not cost savings. Uh that are not out there that you should take advantage of. So this has been six years, so it's probably time to, just to put it out there and see what we get back.
I think we do.
I believe on this one we do, yeah.
I think so.
Motions.
We're gonna go out to RFP. Um, just to see what's out there. So. Um, this also was a cr- uh request from trustee Polley, I believe, to uh last year. To go out for RFP, so.
Yes, so, okay. Um, so I'll make motion to request for proposals for the twenty twenty six audit services.
I'll second it.
Okay, Brooks and Barhite. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Number ten Clerk's Office, discussion and possible action on the following, ten point one approval of minutes. From the June sixteenth twenty twenty five Special Village Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, Kim and Brooks, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes from the June sixteenth twenty twenty five Village Board Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brooks and Barhite. All in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? June twenty third, Committee of the Whole. Minutes.
Make motion.
Barhite and Hopkins. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Uh approval of minutes from the June twenty third twenty twenty five Special Village Board Meeting.
Second.
Ganton Hopkins. All in favor?
I abstain.
Aye.
And you abstain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there.
So five to zero to one. I'm an I, anyone opposed? Approval of minutes from the July eighth twenty twenty five Village Board Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brooks and Hopkins. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright. Ten point two ordinance twenty twenty five point zero seven nine eight and ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter two eighty three entitled fireworks. Section five entitled display. Subsection D entitled permit issuance of the Village of Salem Lakes municipal code.
So we brought this to the board at one of our previous meetings, asking to add. Uh the phrase uh. Individual or groups of individuals, only because businesses weren't allowed to pull permits. Um I do want to say as it's being approved, this doesn't mean. That Joe Smith down the street can go buy fireworks and just light them off, this means they can apply for the display permit. Which means they need to have insurance, they need to have all of the items required to hold that permit. I have received phone calls already when the agenda was released, asking if individuals can just, and I said.
And are we going to charge a fee for that?
We were going to, but because we put this through so quickly, I was unable to pull other areas and get it. Pulled together for this to be approved for a local business to be able to utilize this.
So we can still put that into play.
Yeah, you bet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Hopkins and Brooks, is there any additional questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Ten point three, composition of the sex offender residency board.
Madam President, this is arising because um uh. The. Uh constitution due process require local governments to have. A process or procedure to uh allow for someone to apply for exemption from your sex offender. Regulations. Um, many communities have. This process set up where the uh reviewing board. Uh typically called the sex offender residency exemption board. Um comprised solely of resident members. Uh of the community, sometimes those resident members could even be a local law enforcement official. Or adding to it a local law enforcement officials. So what we did for you is we surveyed what a lot of communities are doing. Typically, they are appointing anywhere from three. To five uh citizen members, most of the time it's three, this is in the memo, that's part of your packet. Based on these examples, we're giving you uh two options. Uh to have the board uh set up. The sex offender board set up uh in one of two ways, one option would be a three resident member board. Uh where all three members are citizen members. Uh the members would be appointed by the village president and subject to approval by the village board. Members would serve uh no more than two terms at three years max, but it's a total of six years of service. Um, in order to achieve some diversity. We've put in here a clause that says that the members would come from the various. Uh hamlets of the village. Um, your second option is three resident members, the process would work the same. Plus two trustees. And so upon the boards, the village board trustees upon your direction tonight. We can implement one of those options into your sex offender residency ordinance. Uh in this way. Village Board of Trustee Members, you've got a lot on your plate. Um to handle the quasi judicial aspect of. Uh any type of hearing. Um, there's a lot of extra weight upon you and that's why a lot of municipalities have these sex offender boards. Put into another uh group's hands.
Comments from the board?
I kind of like option uh one, three resident members only, uh no board members. And the reason I say that is because in today's makeup. We have two trustees that are from the Camp Center Lake area. And two from the Wilmont area. Does that mean we're going to leave out? Someone from the community from those respected areas. Uh if we go with just the three. Uh resident members, we can pick and choose from. Any hamlet within, as long as we don't have two from the same. Do you, do you pick them? Per case? Or?
No, they would.
Three?
It would be the same three serving uh their term, so again, the term, under either option, the term would be three years. For two terms max, so it's a total of six years of service. But you would not pick. Okay, uh application by application, because this board would require some education. And experience to go through applications. You know, your community may not receive a lot of these applications. In the two and a half years that I've been here, you've only had one, you may not have a lot. Uh but these are arising at a general level more and more and more in the last um. Eight years, six to eight years in particular. And there's a lot of reasons for that that are outside the village's control. But it is likely you could see another application or two. Uh in the next ten years, and so now would be a good opportunity to modify your ordinance.
What does Bristol and Twin Lakes and all our neighbors do?
I don't know, um we have not looked at what your neighbors are doing.
I know uh. Paris uh has a uh separate board made up of their residents. And I believe it's a three member board. So it wouldn't be the only person, it's, oh, no, no. We're not gonna be the only village or municipality that will do this.
Yeah.
You made a really good point about. The first one and where we all reside, which I hadn't thought about, so I would agree with you a bit. The first one, the three resident members seems like the best option for us.
That is also the one that I like.
Do you need a motion for that?
We do. Okay, um so I will make a motion to proceed with um. Having our attorney. Draw that up. As a three resident number board. Sarah, who did you get for that one? Okay. Alright, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Ten point four, approval of applications filed with the clerk for mobile home park licenses upon payment of the necessary fees. Carefree Estates, hundred and fifty three home sites. Lakewood Estates, twenty six home sites. Lake Crest Shores, fifty four home sites.
Are we doing this as a group or one at a time?
I think as a group unless somebody has anything.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Hopkins and Gant, any questions, comments? Alright, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Ten point five, approval of applications filed with the clerk for direct sellers permits upon payment of the necessary fees, power home remodeling for Trever Powder. Trevor Putter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hopkins and Brooks. All in favor?
No, I had. Some discussion I'd like to do on this one, please.
Sure, yeah.
Is this the power home remodeling uh located out of Gurnee, Illinois? I I didn't, the the sound cut out for a second there, but.
Um, it's out of Rosemont, it says Rosemont. Rosemont, Illinois.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Rosemont, Illinois?
They're out of Rosemont, Illinois?
Yes.
Um, that was not what came up online when I, when I searched him out here, but let me try that um. Again, here, and see something.
The address is on Kegan Strode. The address is on Kegan Strode.
There's some of the employees are in what do you call? That were listed, lived, uh, at Gurnee. So, okay, when I looked it up, there must be a second power home remodeling locally in Gurnee as well. So if it's, if it's the one out of Chicago, then I don't have any further comments.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Number eleven, Public Works, discussion of possible action on the following items. Eleven point one, change orders number two in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars in payment request number two in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents for twenty twenty-five utilities and roadway project.
In your packet is project payment number two in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents for the twenty twenty-five street and utilities improvements. The contractor and their subcontractors performed the following drainage and sanitary work between June first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Contractor installed the drainage improvements along one hundred twenty-second street. This work included installation of mainline drainage pipe and structures. The roadway was pulverized, graded, compacted, and proof rolled. Due to conditions of the road after the drainage system was installed, it was decided to pulverize existing pavement. Pavement was a better option than milling, resulting in the change order. Overall, the pulverizing option, change order number two, was cheaper than milling. The sanitary manholes were adjusted and rehabbed as directed. The roadway was paved. Road shoulders were replaced and compacted. Change order number two in the amount of three thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars was generated because it was determined the best course of action was to pulverize the pavement instead of milling after the drainage system was installed. We did not have a quantity item for pulverizing, so it had to be added. The change order results in an overall net savings because item nine S was eliminated, which was milling the pavement. The contractor was penalized two hundred fifty dollars for not reporting their daily schedule twice. We are retaining five thousand dollars until law and restoration is completed along one hundred twenty-second street. And my recommendation is for approval of change order number two and payment request number two.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hopkins and Barhite. Any questions from the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Eleven point two, purchase of a front, a replacement front end loader from Miller Bradford in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hopkins and Gant.
So I won't bore you guys with all the, the details. Everything on the memo is basically the same. I was requested to do a couple other things. So as you see in the memo, there's three other companies that I got two quotes for. And there's source well quotes, talking with Mr. Polley about that. And as you see, actually, the source well quote is a little bit more money than the municipal discount. The ones that don't have, that is just a single quote, those are just source well quotes, and that's what they, they offered us. The other thing that was changed was I'm requesting the purchase of a the gravel bucket, but no snowplow at this time. We'll take the snowplow and we'll do that separately. So if you notice, the total prices that you see are just with the gravel bucket, no snowplow. I know it got a little confusing because they are still in the quotes, but they're not added to the price.
So no snowplow then?
Not at this time. We'll do that separately. We'll do it like what we did with that, the mulching head.
And what is the delivery on this?
So the, for the six twenty-one, that one is in stock. It would probably be a few weeks, just because they would have to fit it out with the gravel bucket and everything like that.
Six fifty-one or six twenty?
Six fifty-one. What did I say?
Six twenty.
Sorry.
And then, so a couple of weeks, and then when you get that, then the other one will go to, or you'll trade it in?
So we could go either way. We can either send it to auction. We do have some other small equipment that will probably be coming to the board. We just wanted to get through this. So if we do end up bringing it to auction, we can send everything all at once. Otherwise, we could trade it in. I don't have any hard trade in numbers. But when I have talked to a couple, just ballparked it at about fifteen thousand. And that's going to be a give or take on that.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just, I had a few, was looking through the, through the bids. It seems that, well, question, does this new case have counterweights?
Yeah, I, they all have counterweights on the, the rear.
They, they all, they all have counterweights?
Yeah, that's.
This case that we're getting has, has counterweight?
Yeah, I'll have a counterweight on the back.
And then does this case have transmission and axle brush guards?
Axle brush guards and, what do you say, transmission and axle brush guards?
Talking of belly pan there, Pete?
I could double check on that. They do, they're all quoted with fenders and everything as well, so. As far as brush guards, I guess I, I'd have to ask on that, but they are all quoted with fenders to help kind of protect that area of the machine.
Well, the, and the main reason I ask is because two of the bids did have brush guards. I didn't see them on the others. And also Caterpillar, I, I'm not so sure how we did for the request of the pricing and how we create our spec, because Caterpillar's bid has an eight-year extended warranty with it, and the other ones don't. So I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of a little bit curious. They also had the brush guard assembly, belly pan stuff that I didn't see on the case. So I guess typically the, they put together a request for proposal or for a bid, I should say, for a piece of equipment. Generally, it's sort of like the same horsepower, the size wheels, the seventy-six starred bucket. And, and then all those things are either a hit or not a hit. So I'm just curious if, you know, there's that eight year on that one. Do we know what that price is without that eight year and comparable to the warranties as the other companies have listed?
I would have to check. Obviously, the cat is about fifty thousand dollars more. I don't think you're going to save fifty thousand within eight-year warranty, and a lot of the warranties are just different because it's what different companies offer that are just, you know, with the price type of deal.
Yeah.
I know we had that conversation.
It's not up for a standard case year warranty.
Yeah, we had that conversation. So I can look into it, but.
Has the brush guard.
And every machine is, you know, they call things differently to spec out a machine just for the fact that everyone's a little different. Some options are you're, you're probably going to have different options on a cat than a case and a Hyundai to a case and you know, everything like that. They're going to be a little bit different. It's just, we're going off of what we seen in person. Obviously, we did not demo a cat, but we did demo the other five, and we're also going off of, you know, what we saw with the machine, how we, how it ran, how it worked. So that's how we came up with the six fifty-one.
Right, yeah. And I was just asking about, some of these are, are spec differently. We wouldn't put some of those items out if they weren't requested. So that's just something maybe for future consideration.
Sure.
Working on that, I suppose.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Yes.
You're opposed? Okay.
I'm opposed.
Okay, motion carries four to two. All right. Thank you, Andy. Eleven point three, replacement of primary sledge pit sticks, full port valve, plug valve, and gearbox from Dorner Company in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve, ten thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to replace primary sledge pits, extension for port plug valve and gearbox.
Hey, Brooks and Hopkins, do you want to give a little context to this, Andy?
Yeah, so as some of you guys probably noticed when we did our tour at the water treatment plant, there was that big round tank and it had no water in it. And that was due to this, this valve. So clearly, it's an important piece of the puzzle for our treatment process. And just to kind of touch base on how important it is, is, so that's our east clarifier, our center clarifier, the MOV, which is a motor, motorized operated valve became inoperable. And we had to shut that clarifier down as well. And luckily, we were able to take the MOV from the east primary to put in the center primary clarifier. So having this stuff running all the time and, you know, being able to get the parts is important. So the one thing, maybe you guys might have a question on the the ten thousand is a little higher than the other two quotes, and that is because they were the only ones able to provide a quote with getting the gearbox out of the sludge. And the benefit to that is the gearbox isn't in the sludge, longevity should be longer with it. We did ask the other two companies, and we never received a quote for it. So this and Dorner is also a.
They have to do a bunch of adapting. To get it up out of there.
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit more work entailed with it, and Dorner is also a company we use quite a bit when it comes to our valves at the treatment plant, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Right. Uh, Brooks and Hopkins. All right. We will go to number thirteen. Administrator, discussion of possible action on the following items. Thirteen point one, survey results to allow ATV, UTV on county highways with speed limits of thirty-five miles per hour or less. Obviously Cassandra is not here to speak to this, however, there were, the survey results were included. So I'm.
Seems like people want this based on the people that took the survey.
Yes. So Sarah, are you able to talk to the number or?
I am not. This was done in her office.
All right. I'm gonna see if I can pull it up. All right, so we received a total of four hundred and eighty-nine responses. In response to question one, should the village allow ATV, UTVs on County Truck Highway W? Eighty-four point six six responded yes. Question two, if they should be allowed on Highway B? Same, eighty-four point six six, yes. Question three, Highway SA? Eighty-five point eight six, yes. Question four, County Trunk Highway F? Eighty-four point eight four responded yes. And question five, County Trunk Highway AH? Eighty-four point six three responded yes.
Isn't supposed to be thirty-five and under?
Yes, in areas of thirty-five and under. Yes, for all of those.
I asked to have this put on the agenda. There are some roads, like some of Highway C, some on Highway K, and Highway W, we just left the majority of that off. So these are all thirty-five or under, okay? And as I, as I stated earlier in our previous meetings, Twin Lakes, Wheatland, and Randall all adopted this almost the same ordinance, but they didn't really specify which road they were going to open up. They opened up all the roads, so. Just for a safety factor is what I'm looking at here, okay? And as I said before too, that the, any signage that had to be put up, it'd be paid by ATV club, so it doesn't cost the village anything other than the attorneys are changing ordinance, so, okay?
Okay. So I think what we're looking for here is direction from the board on if we should have staff proceed to revise our ordinance on this.
Yes. How did they put this up? They put it on the website?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was on.
Advertising?
Yeah, there was a Survey Monkey that went out. It went out by email. And it was also shared online and on the village website. We got approximately seven hun, or excuse me, five hundred responses.
All right, I just didn't see it. I don't peruse the website.
All right.
I did send it to your email.
So I will need a motion to direct staff to proceed to revise the ATV ordinance, and then we'll pass discuss that or possible passage at the next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion or advise the staff to revise the ordinance written to include.
I'll second that.
Ganton Polley. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Before we take off though, I would just want to show this map here. Now, this is two thousand seventeen compared to two thousand twenty-five. The, the, on the, on the left, right, left-hand side, all the yellow, those are, those are state trails, okay, designed trails. And the pink, it are actual routes. So this is the difference in, in eight years of what we have there.
Okay. All right. Thirteen point two, discussion regarding the potential acquisition of parcel seven zero four, one twenty-three, zero three, zero nine, two six, located on the southeast corner of County Highway W and one hundred and fourteenth street in the hamlet of Wilmont for a public parking lot. So this is something that we've been discussing. When they redo W next year, they're going to be taking a lot of the parking away. And we have someone that is interested in letting the village acquire this. We did not include it in our budget for this year. However, if the board would like to look at including it in next year's budget, then that is what we need to discuss if we are all on board with purchasing this or possibly purchasing this.
Kind of numbers are they talking? I know you can't say.
I don't know that.
No, yeah, we don't know that, but we could talk about need and that Highway W project is going to be removing somewhere between, originally thought to be as many as seventeen spaces, somewhere between nine and seventeen parking spaces, which Wilmont is incredibly limited to begin with. So from a, we got a B two zoning through there, I believe it is on first floor, residential second floor. And, and it's, it's really hard to have anybody have a business be successful in those pieces that could be businesses with losing parking. And then anybody who's been through there, when the dance studio has maybe, I was in some form of recital, it's, the parking overflows beyond Highway W and into the side streets, and we really are overdue for some kind of some kind of solution for additional parking in Wilmont.
So if we put a village parking lot out there, who's responsible if a car is damaged?
Well, who's responsible if a car is damaged in the village parking lot of the, outside of the building you're sitting in tonight?
I think that's a private right, Ramsey? Unless it's damaged by one of our vehicles, that would just be go through your own insurance. Am I correct?
That's correct, following your scenario.
So it's a, it would be considered a public area, hence their own insurance?
Well, if an accident is occurring on a, on a public area, I guess what would be the liability or responsibility of the local government? I mean, unless the local government employee is causing the accident, there's no liability. You have immunity to fall back on? Unless you are creating or know of a danger, you should have immunity.
But then again, this is a county project that they're doing. I mean, why aren't they supplying, so they're taking away, pizza's seventeen, I heard eleven. So anyway, we're taking away these, these parking spaces. Why isn't the county trying to do this?
Well, Ron, you did attend that meeting with Cassandra, myself, Brad, and members of the Kenosha County Highway Division as well as administration. And we did have a discussion that there was some assistance that would be potentially coming our way in conjunction with us making a move for the Peace Atlantic.
But as I recall, I think the county said they're not in the parking business, and I think the village of Salem Lakes isn't in the parking. But as I recall, I think the county said they're not in the parking business. And I think the village of Salem Lakes isn't in the parking business. The, you know, so we're gonna supply these parking spaces for private business. I can't.
So if we, we oversee zoning and we're having zoning in an area where there's not appropriate parking. So actually, yes, now villages, cities, towns do have municipal parking lots um, that handle. The uh, the flow for the area, so it's not an uncommon thought process. And anybody who's been over there can see the difficulties um, with any kind of flourishing happening. So from an economic development angle, uh, successful angle for angle for businesses, it, it, it's, it's, it's a smart move to um. To help provide parking where we can. There's limited opportunity to get parcels there as well.
Can't we just allow parking alongside the, on the side of the road? Right now it's illegal, I believe, in Wilmot. That's what they're doing now.
It, it is, but there's, there's gonna be nine to, to eleven, whatever it is, some number of spaces lost with this project. And they put in the turn lanes and such. And so it's been, it was additional parking was needed before this project was penned. Um, it's gonna be even more severe so now. So parking is already going to be remaining there as it was, but only in a lesser format. Um, so if that helps paint a better picture.
Is this the empty lot that's right next to the uh, the ice cream shop, Hansons?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's the one, yes.
We could charge for parking, couldn't we? We could. Why?
I mean, municipalities do.
It's true.
There's apps and always church, you know, people will probably still go get their ice cream, but to help gate for it. Then we have to have somebody other uses that, that's something.
Once we've uh, obtained it, if that's what was uh, required or desired. But um, ultimately, I just have to ask you, the board members, are you taking a look at what Wilmot definitely is in horrible need of? And what are your thoughts on that?
I guess I look at it no differently than I look at what's going on down in Salem. They've got restaurants down there. We don't have much parking down there for them. Um, so where are you gonna open up parking for? Uh, the area along highway eighty three and uh, what is it, eighty fourth, eighty fourth there? Yep. I see, yeah.
Oh. So sure, that's, I would say parking is a consideration in every area. And uh, and if there's, I haven't really heard any parking complaints over there, but I'm sure they exist, they just haven't come to me. Um, but uh, absolutely, we should be trying to expand parking where we can to bolster business districts. That's just kind of like a standard. Thought um, or understanding that should just kind of be in place, that if we have another area that needs it, we should be looking to see where we can obtain land. For parking as well. But in this particular case, there's an empty parcel. Uh, it's in a prime location uh, for parking. Uh, we have a definite need, so I can understand how you don't look any differently, but maybe you should look at it just a little bit differently.
I'd like to know how much the county is gonna kick in before uh, I approve or agree to any monies coming from the village.
So I think that is, I spoke with Samantha on Saturday. And um, they are looking into some options and she will get back to us shortly. I think tonight's discussion is on whether the village is even interested in acquiring this parcel. And you know, we don't do budget for a few months, so it would be, uh, that's a budget. Discussion. If we choose to try to figure out how we are going to um. Allocate dollars for this. However, uh, Samantha, like I said, is working on some options. So the county is trying to partner with us on this. And I do agree, Pete, that it is necessary. Um, and I also agree that for the um. Fiscal viability of this village, that we need to do everything we can to support the businesses that we have. And um, so if there is something that we can do, then we should do. Uh, as we all know, that businesses um, help support our tax base, which we need to run our village, so.
How many parking spaces does this lot, um, how many, how many cars can hold?
Um, I know that that information originally was being sent to, I think it was um, uh, our engineer Smith for an answer. I, I didn't hear back what it was, but it was uh, potentially as many that are being lost and if not a few more. Plus, we talked about creating some diagonal parking going down the street from there uh, uh, eastbound. Um, along with that, that, that could help uh, bolster that, so as part of a, a, a larger project, that we could really improve. Um, and that, it wouldn't be the end all be all, because we really need quite a bit more to get to where we need to be. So um, this is not many opportunities to come along with vacant land in little town uh, for parking. So, so total number of spots, I guess, could be somewhere around the equivalent of what's lost, uh, maybe a little bit more.
Would we be required to put in, since we're gonna have a depth, we're gonna have to pave it, we're gonna have to put in water retention? Perfect gutter?
So I think that's.
Well, yeah, they got.
So we, we don't have certain gutter a- a- anywhere else in Wilmot, would we start there?
No.
I mean, you could stick a hundred grand into gravel and parking lot.
I think it's, this is just a general discussion on do we even want to explore this possibility? And the dollars and the how will come later. Um, but are we even wanting to discuss this at a? A more in-depth level.
I can see a need for it.
Yes.
I could also see it would be very expensive. But I definitely see a need for it.
And as do I, I hope you consume that.
I would have to see the numbers where it comes and liability we get.
Yep. Yeah, staff won't start working on this unless we say that we are wanting to even explore. Correct.
We know what our black top.
Right, right.
Now.
Correct. But I also know what a dead downtown costs us, so.
Yeah. I hope we're exploring any opportunities for side of road parking in the subdivision closer to businesses, some of the businesses.
I think that all is going to, you know, definitely. Future discussion on, on that. Probably.
Oh, yeah, that's on the subject. How, how do we move forward with this president?
Um, so we need a motion to direct staff to um. You know, take the next steps in exploring. Uh, acquiring the parcel uh, and the costs and the how.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to move into the next step to explore the cost and the how for creating parking lot at said parcel.
I will second that. We'll do a roll call vote. Um, trustee Gant?
No.
Trustee Hopkins?
No.
I'm a yes. Trustee Polly?
Yes.
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
And trustee Warhite?
So this is just checking the costs, not investing very much money and time into it.
Correct.
Cause I have to see the numbers and that, which I'm for that, but yeah, I'll, I'll make that a yes on that condition.
Alright, so. Order two. Okay, thirteen point three, planning and funding for future fire chief. Open position, seeking salary range, authorization and permission to hire innovative public advisors, a recruiting firm. For twelve thousand five hundred dollars to assist the fire commission in recruiting and filling the open position.
Can we not advertise around here first and then turn to them?
Um, this is, uh, so. Okay, I don't know if Allie wanted to come up first and talk. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. A little background on this, uh, from the beginning of our time together. President Booker had asked me to help serve the community. At that point in time, we had discussed a period of time of two to three years. Um, as you know, I flunked retirement the first time, came back out to help the community and my family is telling me it's time to retire a second time. Um, our goal with this is to provide an opportunity that we have a reasonable transition period. So that the, the board can find an appropriate replacement candidate or at least some type of an interim situation. Uh, to that end, I know that the village administrator had asked to help do that through a recruiting firm. And so as far as I understand, there had been uh, uh, firms that had been contacted. And I think the representative that's here to speak to you tonight is the one that's being referenced in, in the agenda. Any questions?
No. Sad, but no.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so I'll let you um, give your presentation and then we will discuss.
Sure, thank you. My name is Jess Wilds and I'm a partner of Innovative Public Advisors. Um, I hope that you have our presentation or proposal in front of you tonight, but thank you for allowing us the opportunity. Um, we're pleased to assist with this process if, if you'll have us. Um, you'll see that within the project timeline, we do anticipate um, maybe pushing out the date to next week. Or later this week for a kickoff if, if you award the contract in our plan tonight. Uh, since it was earlier proposed for June sixteenth through the eighteenth, so next week. Um, but we are an executive recruitment and strategy firm uh, based out of West Bund, Wisconsin. But we serve all different municipalities throughout the state in executive recruitment for services like this. But also for city administrator searches and department head searches. And we also do strategic plans, communications plans and other services for municipalities. So we're pleased to be here and happy to answer any questions right now.
Can you tell us what you'll do for that dollar amount?
Absolutely. So if you go to our scope of work page, um, we'll take a, sort of a, an urgency to this process. We understand that the retirement is forthcoming. We wanna be sure that there's someone in this place ready to go when you need them. So we'll get going right away with really a position, oh, great, thank you, a position assessment with you. And your fire commission to really understand what it is that you want in your next fire chief. We'll take that information and that of the survey and we'll create a position announcement, a profile brochure, custom landing page and other marketing materials. One thing that we do for each of our positions, create this custom landing page on the website that highlights your community. It highlights the position itself, it has photos, content, downloads, it's really easy to communicate with us, the recruiting firm. And we stay in contact with you throughout the way as well. Uh, we would be working alongside our fire EMS advisor, Paul Stevens. He would be helping lead this recruitment on our team. Uh, Paul is a recently retired fire chief from the city of Hartford, wonderful guy, well-connected. He'd be a great partner on this as well. Um, and then you would also have the two principals of our firm working directly on this as well. We'd be active in promoting the search on various uh, fire association websites, job boards. The league with Wisconsin municipalities. Uh, we also have a strong following on LinkedIn. And then part of our service is just really being active recruiters. We're gonna go out there and try and find the right fire uh, professional. To fit the, the role that you want, the person that you want. Um, part of that position assessment looks at uh, the type of experience that this person would have. But also their sort of personal characteristics that you think are important. So we keep that in mind um, in trying to find your next fire chief. Uh, then as we get applications going, it's a few week process where we put the position out there. We would post a date for first review, sort of a priority date, where we would be pulling the applications together. We would be conducting all this sort of preliminary Zoom interviews, calls, meetings. And then be presenting to you candidates for the position and working with you and your, your fire commission. Um, from that point on, we would take the candidates that you decide um, are the right fit. And schedule the entire interview process and have them come here probably for like an afternoon or an evening to meet. Team, department heads, uh, elected officials and those you see fit as part of that process. And then we typically include a community tour as part of that as well.
Okay, um, what other communities have you helped?
Sure, so we've, we've helped a number of communities with their recruitment. Uh, this, the village of Waniki. The city of Wapaka, we're currently assisting the city of Beaver Dam with their uh, city administrator search. And my uh, business partner Jay Shambro is not here tonight because he's serving as their interim city administrator right now. We do some interim services. Um, we're working with village of Sussex, um, lots of different ones. I can provide you with the list if you'd like to, when we can get through here.
Okay.
Sure.
Does anyone have, I have one question. Um, on your um. Draft timeline, the project budget says twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our agenda says twelve thousand five hundred.
On what page does this say?
Um, I don't know, cause our packet has, like, it's just, yeah, it's on the one that has um, recruitment draft timeline.
Yep, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So that is what it is?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, I'll remind the board and for those who weren't here during the time. Um, when we were looking for um, an administrator, we were fortunate to have Dave Brettel. On staff as our interim administrator, and this is what he does, same type of company. He is the one that ran our administrator search, which is actually a lot of work. And also doing the um, the pre-interviews, the Zoom interviews is a lot of work. So we didn't have to pay for that at that time because he did it for us since he was our interim. Um, our staff does not have uh, the qualifications um, to do this recruitment. And to be honest, with as damaged of a reputation as we have right now, it's not going to be easy. So I'm just going to say that. Um, and so I think that um, you know, Al does not want to be here forever. And we need to try to find uh, the best candidate that we can for replacement. Because again, past history, uh, fire chiefs are not easy to um, part ways with. If you need to, so it's very important. This is one of the uh, most important roles in our village. And in my personal opinion, I think that it's very important to um, do everything that we can. To make sure that we're getting um. The right person.
Madam President, if I may add to that.
Yes.
That, that summary is correct. And I would add for some of our new trustees. Um, the police commission is the one who is the entity that handles the uh, hiring. Uh, this body holds the purse strings though. And it is not uncommon for commissions to have the assistance of a consultant. For all of the same reasons that Madam President pointed out. So that's not uncommon at all. But I just didn't want confusion that you're hiring them and then you guys are holding the puppet strings on Innovative Public Advisors. Doesn't work that way.
Right.
Public Innovative Public Advisors would be working with the commission. You have the administrator and others that are playing liaison back and forth. And then this board too will have sort of a monitoring function overall, but not a, not a uh, controlling the detail function. Nor a final decision function. Thank you.
Yes.
So. Just a question, you do the background checks and the schooling checks and all that beforehand?
So we, we typically would work with either your police department or a neighboring one of your choice to do the full background check. We would do preliminary checks.
You do the.
And reference checks, things like that.
Education and all that one.
Yep.
Yeah. And when we were doing our administrator search, I think we had something like fourteen or seventeen. Applications and um, Dave Brettel, you know. Did what you're going to do and weeded them down. Um, you know, he made his recommendations. Uh, he gave the information and then uh, that's how we chose the four that we were going to interview. But all of that takes a lot of time um, to do. And like I said, uh, you know, fire chiefs are um. Hard to part ways with if you have problems. So I think that this is uh, an important um, decision.
I, I appreciate the history and the summary from both of you because I was looking at these and wondering. I assumed this probably is the best way, but I am.
It is not an easy process. Um, and. and uh I can only um articulate from the administrator search that, that we did, that uh you know, I was talking with um Dave Riddle just about daily on that with updates, and there is a lot that goes into it. Um he spent a, a lot of time on that, so. And like I said, we got lucky at that time that we didn't have to pay for that service. Uh obviously, we paid, we paid for his time, but we didn't pay for an additional service for that.
Also, a little time that we, it took us to get through the whole process of that.
Yes.
And reading all of these proposals, obviously a lot of work and thought goes into picking the right person, so I appreciate it.
And it's also marketing and knowing what markets uh you know, to put that out in and um you know, sure, could we try to do it ourselves? Sure, but would we be putting our best foot forward on such an important um position in our community? I don't think so. Um.
Madam President, I'd make a motion uh to use IPA at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars for the recruitment of a new fire chief. I'll second that motion.
Okay, are there any other additional questions or comments from the board?
They're going to be working directly with uh.
Fire commission. Yeah, we don't hire, we just fund, so. Um and the fire commission also does not have, you know, they can't spend the time to do the recruiting. They, they can, you know, after they're vetted, um they would bring the candidates to the fire commission, and then they would do the interviewing and ultimately the hiring. Um so, okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
I.
I?
I.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
So you're going to adjust these uh timelines then and get it to us?
Yep, I'll work with your team to update the timeline and get a kickoff started and make sure we have all the right people as part of that process.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number fourteen, fire department, discussion of possible action on the following, fourteen point one, baby box update.
Uh good evening again. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to see some of the recent press. Uh we were successfully able to uh unveil and implement the sixth baby box in the state of Wisconsin, which is now live and active and uh represents an additional tool to our community should someone find themselves in a need to uh surrender an infant. Uh very proud and pleased with all the effort that was put in, all the way from uh many members of our staff to um anonymous donors who uh helped to make this possible. Very proud of that effort and uh again, it's available and look forward to uh any way that we can help the community in regard to that.
Thanks, Phil.
Perfect, I did see that. Thank you very much. Guys did a great job and I'm, I'm proud that we're one of the few that hasn't. I hope we never have to use it. Okay, all right. Um fourteen point two, adjustments to non-union part-time and full-time wages.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to table this uh as the administrator is not present. I'll second that.
So Hopkins and Barhite? Any questions from the board? Okay, all in favor?
I.
I?
All.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Fifteen, closed session, fifteen point one, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight five sub one sub E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session for the following purposes, negotiations on I A F F, fire and rescue contract, union contract wages, and other terms and conditions.
Madam President, I'd like to table this closed session as the administrator is not present.
I will second that. All in favor?
I.
I?
I.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bueker and Brooks? All in favor?
I.
I.
I?